I call this meeting the Upstate County Commission. In order, we'll start with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Beliega. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Jackie, if you will leave the minutes on November 5th, we appreciate it.
Good morning.
What?
The county commission of Upstate County West Virginia how they're regularly meeting at courthouse and it's on Thursday, November 5, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. J.C. Rafferty called a meeting to order. President J.C. Rafferty, Commissioner Troy Brady, Commissioner Terry Cutright, Commissioner Terry Wallace, County Administrator Tabitha Perry, Assistant County Administrator, and Jekyll and Dinklaw for Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Beliega. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved regular meeting minutes of October 29, 2015 with typographical corrections and the October 29, 2015 minutes of the joint meeting of the Upstate County Commission and Buchanan City Council as submitted. Patty Adams, Upstate County resident, appeared before the commission and read the World Pancreatic Cancer Day proclamation which promotes the awareness of pancreatic cancer and designates November 13, 2015 as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in Upstate County. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the proclamation. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the West Virginia Secretary of State FOIA online database access forms to allow Kerry Wallace and Tabitha Perry to access the Freedom of Information Act online database. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the Division of Justice and Community Services Victims of Crime Act grant award contract agreement, project number 15-BA-0333 in the amount of $34,662 and related documents. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the certified correspondence to Paul Chapman, Upstate County resident concerning required action of Upstate County Safe Sides and Structures Ordinance and Fourth Amendment case number 091114-01. J.C. Rafferty commended the property owner for working with the commission to bring the property into compliance with the ordinance. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the verification of employer information which allows MCQ Consulting LLC to complete forms 1094-C and 1095-C, Affordable Care Act, on behalf of the Upstate County Commission. Kerry Wallace reviewed information concerning the payment of medical expenses incurred as a result of an incorrect schedule of benefits coverage dispersed by Epsom Incorporated for planned year 2014. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized payment of the medical expenses by the Upstate County Commission. Only one employee was attracted by the error and incorrect schedule of benefits has been distributed to employees. Commissioner Brady recommended delaying the action on Agenda Item Number 6 until after 9:30 appointment of Sheriff David Kaufman. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved request from E911 Communication Center Director for the promotion of Sandra Goldman to full-time television anchor at her current rate of pay. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the resignation of Amanda Ray as administrative assistant for the addressing and mapping office effective November 2, 2015. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the advertisement/job posting for the part-time position of Secretary/Administrative Assistant for the Upstate County Commission Addressing and Mapping Office. The part-time position is for approximately 19.5 hours per week. Applications must be received before the close of business on November 18, 2015. J.C. Rafferty reviewed the following for your information items. Number 1, Upstate County Sheriff's Financial Statement for Period Ending September 2015. 2, Upstate County Extension Office, November and December 2015 Calendar of Events. 3, Upstate County Family Resource Network Newsletter, November 2015. 4, Buchanan-Upstate Chamber of Commerce Newsletter, November 2015. 5, Upstate County E911 Communication Center Reports, October 2015, as listed. 6, Agendas and or Notice of Meetings, as listed. 7, Meeting Minutes, as listed. 8, Meetings, as listed. 9, Appointments needed for Outcoming, as listed. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved to remove "tabled" items under "Upstate County Commercial Dog Breeding Operations" (tabled 93215) from the agenda until the item is ready for action. Upstate County Sheriff David Kaufman appeared before the commission and requested the employment of Seth Cutright as a probationary deputy sheriff. Sheriff Kaufman said that by hiring Mr. Cutright now, a training spot could be secured at the West Virginia State Police Academy in January. Commissioner Brady commented that even though he feels that Mr. Cutright would be an excellent police officer, he has concerns about the likelihood of budgetary shortages in the next fiscal year, requested justification for hiring an additional officer. Sheriff Kaufman advised that he is not asking for an additional slot as there is a vacancy due to the resignation of Virgil Miller, and the position is already in the budget. In addition, Sheriff Kaufman has been informed that the number of state police officers is expected to be cut, leaving a shortage of law enforcement personnel in the county. Sheriff Kaufman expressed that the number one priority should be the safety and protection of its citizens of Upstate County, especially since drug use and crime rate has been steadily increasing. Commissioners Rafferty and Cutright expressed that even though they are both in agreement with Commissioner Brady about their fiscal responsibilities, public safety should come first. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Seth Cutright as probationary deputy sheriff, effective date of employment is November 15, 2015, at the rate of $17 per hour with an increase to $17.31 per hour upon completion of training at the West Virginia State Police Academy. Note, Cutright and Rafferty for Brady against. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved the resignation of Seth Cutright as animal control officer effective November 14, 2015. John Hayman and Calvin McCutcheon, Canatin Land Club representatives, appeared before the commission and reviewed information concerning the effects of diabetes on eyesight issues. Mr. Hayman read the Diabetes Awareness Month proclamation which points to diabetes as a leading cause of blindness and designates November as Diabetes Awareness Month in Upstate County. After discussion on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the proclamation. Kerry Wallace reviewed a road name request application. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Terry Cutright, the commission approved Almato's Way for the private driveway off of Country Club Road. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following honorations and/or refunds as listed. The commission approved the following consolidation of land tracts as listed. With no further business on motion by Terry Cutright, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission adjourned at 11:55 a.m.
Is there any addition or correction to the minutes as read?
Jackie?
Yes, sir.
On page 1, third red one. Five, you read that the commission approved and authorized the Minnesota State Commission. You read it as present, or it should be present, shouldn't it? Or perhaps the present to sign?
It should be present.
Okay. On our minutes as listed.
So I just read it incorrectly?
No, you read it correctly, but it's printed on the minute incorrectly. It's printed as "Commission." I think that needs to be changed to "Present."
Okay, wait a minute. Which form?
Right, it's actually the sixth. Actually, all of them need to be signed, not correspondence.
Okay, if everybody signed it, if everybody signed it and it was a correspondence, then the commission was authorized, so that would be...
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
So you're standing corrected. With that, if there's no corrections or anything to the minutes, I ask for a motion to approve the minutes as read. Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have six scheduled meetings this morning. The first one will be at 9:15. It'll be a Molly Queen and a Caitlin Lathan presentation of backpack food drive for Academy Elementary School. At 9:30, we have a discussion regarding property located in Union Tax District, Tax Map 6H, Partial Number 68, owned by Philip Lance. Also, we have a discussion regarding property located in Mead Tax District, Tax Map 3K, Partial Number 51, 52, 52-1, and 52-3, owned by John R. Simons and Rita F. Simons. At 9:45, we have James Bostick, West Virginia Beef Industry, in reference to lease agreement. At 10 o'clock, we have April Keating, Mountain Lakes Preservation Alliance, discussion regarding concerns over gas infrastructure and the proposed Atlantic Coastal Pipeline in Upstate County. At 1:00 p.m., we have a supervisor meeting, and at 2:00 p.m., we have a policy board meeting. And it is 9:15, so we'll go ahead and get started with Molly Queen and Caitlin Lathan. And you'll state your name, so Channel 3 will know which one.
All right. Good morning. I'm Riley Queen, and this is my partner Caitlin Lathan. We've come to you this morning to present a community service project we'd like to see throughout the courthouse. For several years, Buchanan Academy Elementary School has sent home food for the weekends, but for two years now, they have their Weekend Snack Program, which is also known as the Backpack Program. In this program, staff members refer kids who have housing instability, are homeless or are living doubled up with other families. Some kids have parents who are temporarily out of work, some are frequently referred to Child Protective Services due to neglect, and some of these children are essentially raising themselves. In this program, the staff prepare packaged foods that are easy for the kids to fix when they go home, and they send the snacks home over the weekends. Buchanan Academy Elementary School tells the children that receive these backpacks that they were nominated to receive nutritious snacks for home. We have been told that the appreciation, not only on Fridays, but for the week after, is tremendous. There are currently 23 students on this program list. We would like to collect these packaged items throughout the courthouse. We would like to start this food drive November 20th, and we would collect the packaged items on December 18th, so these items that were collected could go out for Christmas break in the backpacks, which would obviously mean more than 10 snacks. We would like to thank you for your time, and we hope that you can help the children up Upstate County.
And on this flyer is the list of packaged meals that is suggested.
We have a half a day on the 18th, and it's the day that we have our courthouse Christmas dinner for all employees, so I'd recommend picking it up that afternoon after that event so we can encourage everybody to bring the last.
Okay. What time would that be like at?
It's at noon, so maybe at 2 or 3 o'clock.
Okay. Thank you.
Ladies, are you done?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Sure move.
Second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Will you be handing out the flyers to the department offices?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. If you want to give us some extra, we'll take them to the offices that are outside the courthouse that are still under the commission. Or I'll just make copies. I'll make copies.
Will the action be backpacks?
We just need to bring that food, right? The backpacks are provided.
Yes, the food has listed on the thing. The backpacks are provided. It just gets to the children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few minutes before our next scheduled meeting at 9:30. I'll move over items to discussion, action, and approve. First item is approval request for bids for pest control services. All sealed bids must be received no later than 9:00 a.m. on December 3, 2015. Sealed bids will be opened, reviewed, and read aloud by the Upstate County Commission at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, December 3, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve of that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number two, we have correspondence from Terry Reed announcing his resignation as a member of the Upstate County Deputy Civil Service Commission. Do I have a motion?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number three, we have approval and signature of Staley Communication Incorporated Service Agreement and Attachment A for Upstate County 911. Upon approval, terms and service would begin December 1, 2015, and end November 30, 2016, and would cover the consoles and backroom equipment at the 911 center, in addition to providing 24/7 service, parts and labor. The monthly total for this service would be $960. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number four, we have approval and signature of Valley Business System Service Contract for a machine located at the Upstate County E911 Center. Annual charges would be $540, and a term that service would begin October 1, 2015, and end September 31, 2016. Coverage includes parts, labor, mileage, inspection, and consumable supplies that are not excluded. Exclusions include paper staples and computer networking services. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number five, we have an appointment of J.C. Rafferty as a commission representative at various Atlantic Coast Pipeline or under pipeline-related meetings. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number six, we have a approval and signature of letter to Amy W. Tenney regarding property located in the Buchanan Tax District, Tax Map 5, Partial Number 30. This letter informs the property owner that a member of the Upstate County Sheriff's Department will visit the property on or about the 15th day of each month and complete an inspection report to ensure progress is being made at the property. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number seven, we have a signature of correspondence to Epsom Inc. regarding the payment of a medical expense incurred by employee dependent in 2012. Do I have a motion?
To approve?
That... Do I have a motion in reference to correspondence regarding the payment of the medical?
That is...
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have... Number eight, we have correspondence from Tabitha and Suarez, Buchanan Swim Club team representative requesting permission to host the North Central West Virginia Swim Association Championship Meet at the Splash Williams Recreational Park Pool on July 22 and 23, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number nine, we have correspondence from James T. Farrell, Office of Emergency Management Director requesting approval and signature of the West Virginia Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety, application and authorization to designate a vehicle as an emergency vehicle in order to use red flashing emergency lights. The approval of this application would authorize the use of red flashing warning lights in accordance to West Virginia Code 17C-15-26 for the 2008 Ford F-250 utilized by the local Office of Emergency Management. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number 10, we have approval of Kerry Wallace, County Administrator, to serve as a fiscal agent for the State of West Virginia Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety Homeland Security, State Administrative Agency Subgrant Award in a sum of $6,000 for subgrant period November 1, 2015 through March 31, 2016. Approval of the fiscal agent's signature, the 2015 subgrant application, eligibility certification, and certification regarding lobbying, debarment, suspension, and unresponsibility matters, and drug-free workplace requirements. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number 11, we have correspondence from the Office of Emergency Management Director, James T. Farrell, announcing the resignation of J.C. Edwards as Office of Emergency Management Deputy Director, effective November 10. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have approval of advertisement for the part-time Deputy Director of Emergency Management position with the Office of Emergency Management working 19.5 hours per week at the pay rate weight at $11 per hour. Application will be accepted until the position is formed. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number 13, we have improvement of advertisement for the full-time animal control officer position. The starting rate of pay will be $11 per hour and increase to $12 per hour after required certification or obtain. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Also, applications must be received on or before the close of business on November 30, 2015. I have approval of the Lewis County Animal Control Facility...
We need to move on that.
You did. He didn't write the second sentence.
You don't put on a 15, that's just a notice that...
Okay.
Fifteen, we have approval of Lewis County Animal Control Facility volunteers Shannon Carver and Craig Westphal. Do I have a motion to approve them volunteers?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Sixteen, we have approval of application for donated blood for Lacy and Carver. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number seventeen, we have correspondence from Amanda Woody announcing her resignation as legal assistant, effective November 20, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number eighteen, we have approval of advertisement for the legal assistant position in the Prosecuting Attorney's Office with a starting rate of up to $11.75 per hour. Position is full-time, however, may be billed as a part-time position dependent on qualifications and circumstances of the applicant. Applicants must be received by noon on December 30, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve that?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number nineteen, we have correspondence from Dennis Xander submitting his letter of interest to be reappointed to serve on the Upstate County Building Commission for another five-year term, effective November 11, 2015. Upon approval, Mr. Xander's new term would expire on November 10, 2020. Do I have a motion to prove Dennis Xander to serve on that ward?
Certainly.
Second, all in favor say aye. Number twenty, we have invoices, but we'll go right on since we have a couple minutes for your information. We have correspondence from Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant County Administrator to Philip Lance regarding property located in Union Tax District, Tax Map 6H, Partial Number 68. The letter informs the property owner that the commission would be meeting to discuss corrective action that needs to be taken to the property at 9:30 a.m. on November 19, 2015, during the regular scheduled meeting in the commission meeting room. Number two, we have correspondence from Tabitha R. Perry, Assistant County Administrator to John R. Simons and Rita F. Simons regarding property located in Mead Tax District, Tax Map 3K, Partial Number 51, 52, 52-1, and 52-3. This letter informs the property owner that the commission would be meeting to discuss corrective action that needs to be taken to the property at 9:30 a.m. on November 19, 2015, during the regular scheduled meeting of the commission meeting room.
Maybe Terry and Tabitha could send a registered letter to them a little note that two weeks from the time they receive, we're going to go to oversee and clean that up.
Their meeting's going to be at 9:30, so they might...
They may be. They may be here at 9:30, so let's hold off on that.
All right.
And we have about a minute and a half, so we'll go to the correspondence. Number three, correspondence from Melissa Garretson-Smith, Executive Director of the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority, announcing that the financial assistance request for the courthouse improvement has been approved. The project invoices the repair and replacement of the look around the dome and the repair of the damage with the structure on the main courthouse. The maximum amount of the award is $81,290, with the county to make up, make a 20% funded match.
Have a minute, honey. I just want to recognize how we're getting this grant award. It's a major grant for $81,000. Two previous assistant administrators have applied for this grant, including myself, and we are both denied, so it's a great accomplishment that we are able to get this grant funding and that the county is able to save a majority of the cost for these improvements.
Thank you, Captain.
Yes, thank you, and I'm glad that was brought to our attention, you know what I mean? Because it is a great thing to receive a grant for $81,000, because without that grant, it would become money from the taxpayers here to do that. So we certainly appreciate everything that you do for this commission. It is now 9:30, and we have scheduled discussion regarding property located in Union Tax District, owned by Philip Lance. We also have discussion regarding property located in Mead Tax District, owned by John Simons and Rita F. Simons. Is any one of them two parties here that would like to discuss?
Tabitha has a brief overview of correspondence that have been sent to these individuals.
The property owned by Philip Lance, a complaint was originally filed in May of 2013. Since then, six letters have been sent to the property owner requesting their removal and proper disposal of any debris, trash, junky hibbles, and/or removal and proper disposal of environmental hazards, in addition to demolition and removal of dwellings or other buildings which are unsafe. The latest letter that was sent out was October 8, which was from the commission, and then I sent a reminder letter on the 12th of November letting them know that a hearing would be taking place today. Today, we have received no response from Mr. Philip Lance. Pretty much with this property, there's just piles of scrap wood... Pretty much with this property, there's just piles of scrap wood and tires that need to be removed. And the photographs were taken in July showing that that debris is still located on the property.
So could you all send them a letter? We return our secret questions, say, you know, what date did he get it? Give him two weeks to you to clean it up, or we're going to get bids and take care of cleaning it up probably ourselves.
The last letter you sent basically stated the same.
Uh-huh.
I might recommend that you solicit bids first.
Okay.
Get approve a bid contingent upon the property not being cleaned. Send them a copy of that contract so they are aware that you are moving forward with the compliance of the ordinance. I'm afraid at this point, because these people have been getting letters for so long and the commission has not had the funding to address the issue, they may not even be reading the letters in their entirety. They may just see the letter and throw it away or ignore it. But if you include a contract agreement with a contractor that will go and remove the debris from the property and subsequently the commission would place a lien on the property, I think it may get their attention.
Do we need a motion to approve that, or just will I make a motion then that we give bids and send the letters to Mr. Lance and play, and we'll look at that?
And give him two weeks from the date that he receives it.
Date they receive the letter.
And he would need to come in or contact one of us with any updates.
I would like to, and I talked to John Simons at a pancake fee at the Ternan Lines Club. He said he had addressed and has cleaned up his place. Before we send a letter, if we could just send maybe these pictures with somebody that can report back to us to see if this has been cleaned up? And if it has, you know what I mean, we can eliminate him. If not, then I will go along with Terry's motion after we send him out to make sure that it's still the same. Then I'll second Terry's motion, you know what I mean, that we take bids and that we contact the people to let them know that we are going to have it cleaned up and liens will be put against the property. So we'll have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And our next one is not until 9:45, and we cannot start before then, even though Mr. Bostick is here. So we'll go ahead with correspondence number four, and that's correspondence from James S. Holm III, D. E., City Engineer, and Thomas E. Landis, Water Treatment Plant Supervisor regarding the city of Buchanan Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project and Maintenance and Scheduling Concerns. I have read that, and that will start in March of 2016. And since the mayor here, if he would like to address that in more detail, Mr. Edwards, we'll have him take the podium, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Ray. Commissioner Ray. Actually, it all pretty well is summed up within the correspondence that you've got. We also sent those to all of the PSDs, so they're well aware of the fact that with the water treatment plant repairs estimated to begin on March 7th of 2016, that we're looking at about 180 days having to either watch the water that we're going to be consuming or making sure that any water that is going to be used to either fill the swimming pool or any of the other large water storage tanks, that the city be aware of it so that way we can compensate within our tanks and we can actually make sure all the potable water's available. Just for a little background, we do over 5 million, approximately 5.5 million gallons of water a day. The actual usage is only around 2.6 million gallons a day. So what we're going to do is while we're looking at the refurbishment of the water plant, take it and eliminate probably about 1.5 to 1 to 2 million gallons so that we can address our pipe galleries and our sediment basins. If you watch Channel 3, it'll explain all of that to you on the water plant facility and how it works. What we do want to do is though, if you have to, and I know that it's around that time that the county actually fills the swimming pool, we can arrange so that that timing can be done where it's not one of the most usable day parts of the day, perhaps first thing in the morning when people are taking showers or in the evening when they're doing that. If we can find a certain time to make that happen, we'd be more than happy to accommodate that. We're not foreseeing any issues with this, but that is also the time of the year where we start, a lot of the PSDs start doing their fire hydrant checks and flushing those. And as you can imagine, if we're already dropping some of the consumption levels or some of the potable water levels, then if we're letting all of that dry out, we're just continually doing that. So this is just a heads up, we have plenty of time. We're hoping that everyone will help cooperate with this. If it gets to a point though where we do have a concern with the amount of water, potable water that will be going to residences, we may have to implement a restriction on how much or when water can be used. We don't foresee that, but that is an ultimate decision that the City Water Treatment Plant could make. So all we're asking is if the citizens and anybody that is going to be using large amounts of water, perhaps a warehouse or perhaps a woodie's lumber, anybody that consumes a lot of the water, just let us know. We can schedule a time where that water can be made available to any service organization that needs it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and hit the correspondence number five. Correspondence from Dr. B. Booker, Justice Program Monitor, Division of Justice and Community Service, Department of Military Affairs and Public Safety, announcing that a member of the Division of Justice and Community Service staff will be visiting on December 7th, 2015 at 12:30 p.m. to meet with the Prevention Resource Officer, Project Director, and Fiscal Officer for the West Virginia Justice Assistant Grant. Number six is correspondence from Mark W. Mackich, State Tax Commission, Sir, and Ellen R. Phillips, the former Assessor of Upsher County, and Donald W. Weiss, the present Assessor of Upsher County, has substantially complied with the Assessor's additional duties as delineated in West Virginia Code 7768, which entitles them to additional compensation. Number seven, we have correspondence from Jake E. Rigert, 26th Judicial Circuit Judge, approving the expenditure of $600 from the Master Court Fund for the modification of council tables in the Master Court Room. Number eight, we have correspondence from Jeff H. Burkey, Chairman of the Property Evaluation Training and Procedure Commission with the State of West Virginia Department of Revenue and State Tax Department, notifying Donald W. Weiss, Assessor of Upsher County, that his office is in compliance with the standards established by the Property Evaluation Training and Procedure Commission. Number nine, we have correspondence from Cheyenne Mauders, 26th Judicial Circuit Community Correction Program Director, announcing that during the Community Correction Board Meeting conducted on November 16th, 2015, that Dennis J. Willock was approved to serve as a Public Defender Board Member representing Upsher County, and Terry Flint was approved to serve as a Victim Advocate Board Member representing Lewis County. Number 10, we have Upsher County Building Remits for October 2015. Eleven, we have Cat Report October 2015. Number 12, we have Dog Report for Lewis Upsher Animal Control, October 2015. 13, we have the Upsher County Health Department Newsletter, November 2015. 14, we have Agendas and our Notes of Meetings. Number 15, we have Meeting Minutes. Number 16, we have Meetings. Number 17, we have Appointments Needed for Upcoming. Upsher County Far Board, vacant position, 6:30-16, First District Community Representative. We have Upsher County Farm Land Preservation Board, vacant position, 6:30-15, at-large, non-farmer. We have Buchanan Upsher Recupational Park Advisory Board, vacant position, 6:30-16. We have the Upsher County Building Commission, R. Dennis Xander, 11-10-15, Commission. We have the Cordeur H. Authority, vacant position, 6:30-16, Commission. The next regular meeting of the Upsher County Commission will be December 3rd, 2015 at 9:00 a.m. Upsher County Courthouse annex. We will not be having a meeting on Thursday, November 26th, 2015, have been canceled due to the courthouse being closed for Thanksgiving. We have about three or four minutes before we have Mr. Bostick at 9:45. We'll take a break for three minutes. We will resume the Upsher County meeting back in session. We have Mr. Bostick with the West Virginia Beef Industry Council. Mr. Bostick, if you want to state your name for the viewers, go ahead.
Name's Jim Bostick. I'm Executive Secretary of the West Virginia Beef Industry Council. What I'm here for tonight, we have been renting the office space off of the county for several years. The last few years, we haven't signed a lease. We are governed by USDA, and we are required to have a lease. So I'm here to ask the commission to enter into a lease with the West Virginia Beef Industry Council for rental space at 40 Chancery Street. When I came up to your offices, Commissioner Rafferty happened to be there, and my proposal at that time was to do a one-year lease. He suggested maybe since we wouldn't have to do this every year, that we could do a longer lease. So I'm going to request that we enter into a lease for the office space for one-year terms with the option of renewing it for an additional nine-year terms. That was his suggestion when I was here.
We have drafted a lease with the help of our prosecuting attorney, and we stated that we'd do a two-year lease agreement and would renew every two years.
Okay.
Now, time's a little bit long.
And it's on the same terms, the rental agreement of $200, and that is rather low rent for the space. So in the event, depending on that two-year mark, we might renegotiate.
Mr. Bostick, how long have you been there? I know you've been in that building for years.
The Beef Industry Council's been in that building, I think, 24 years.
With that understanding, do I have a motion to approve that lease?
With the two-year?
Yes.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bostick, thank you, sir. Sorry for your late.
We'll have you sign in thirty minutes.
Upsher County Commission, we will reconvene. It is now 10 o'clock. We have April Keating with the Mountain Lake Preservation Alliance discussing regarding concerns of gas infrastructure and the proposed Atlantic Coast Pipeline in Upsher County. If you'd like to take the stand.
Thank you, Commissioners. On April 28th, Keylog Economics of Charlottesville, Virginia, wrote a letter to the FERC, that's the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, regarding the total economic cost of pipeline development. The report is a critical look at various conditions that must be considered before approving the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, a 550-mile-long, large-capacity gas pipeline that crosses three states and would deliver gas to the coast for export. The Keylog report points out the two reports commissioned by Dominion, done by Chimera and ICF, are outdated models of dubious merit to long-term economic development decisions and do nothing to count the external costs of the proposed development. The report is long and quite detailed, and we hope to revisit the information in more detail at future timely commission. Until then, we have tried to outline the salient points herein. First, three aspects of the NIPA process that would support an adequate economic analysis. NIPA is the National Energy Policy Act, which was enabled in 1970 and requires federal agencies to assess the environmental effects of their proposed actions prior to making decisions. Purpose and need for the ACP must be examined and established. A private corporation's desire to establish market power and earn supernormal profits must not be mistaken for public purpose and need. The commission must prepare a regional EIS, that's an Economic Impact Statement. Each of the multiple pending pipeline proposals, ACP, MVP, and Appalachian Connector, would serve an identical function. The cumulative effects of these must be considered as they are likely to have severe and lasting environmental and economic downsides. The commission must define and analyze reasonable alternatives that could include no action, increased energy efficiency, expanded use of renewable energy, use of existing or upgraded natural gas transmission infrastructure. Cumulative effects analysis must consider environmental effects along the entire routes and throughout the life cycle of each alternative, including impact on water, soil, wildlife, and recreational amenity, effects of pipeline expansion on greenhouse gas emission, changes of character and loss of community identity, and cultural effects of the industrialization of wild and pastoral landscapes. The commission must not mistake narrow and potentially erroneous estimates of economic impact for the economic contribution or impact of the proposed action, using methods inappropriate for planning and inappropriately applied and asking the wrong questions. The commission must consider the full suite of economic effects of the ACP's construction, operation, and presence, including diminished property values, diminished ecosystem service value, and foregone economic development opportunity. Ecosystem services is a 40-year-old term used to describe the relationship between human well-being and the health of natural systems. I bring this to you to highlight the importance of taking a critical look at any project that has the potential to negatively affect our environment, culture, and heritage in such a massive and long-term and permanent manner. In light of these facts, Mountain Lake Preservation Alliance will be asking the county to commission its own economic study for Upsher County in the near future. As part of the FERC process, individuals and groups have the opportunity to intervene in the proceedings relative to any proposed project. I come to you today with a brief summary of the points outlined in one such motion to intervene, written by Appalachian Mountain Advocates, a nonprofit law and policy center in Lewisburg, West Virginia, on behalf of several groups. Under the Natural Gas Act, the FERC must determine whether construction of the proposed pipeline is or will be required by the present or future public convenience and necessity. AppleMAD, that's a nickname for Appalachian Mountain Advocates, holds that Atlantic's application does not support the finding that ACP fulfills that requirement. Below is and outlines the various justifications for their position. Atlantic has not demonstrated the need for ACP. Evidence shows that existing pipeline capacity could serve the southeast and mid-Atlantic markets. ACP overstates the economic benefits of the pipeline. Their studies are deeply flawed and significantly inflate the benefit that the ACP would provide to affected communities. And it ignores adverse effects of the ACP that would be extremely costly to the public, such as adverse effects associated with the use of eminent domain, including the misapplication of the process, the taking of private land for profit being unethical and contrary to our national principles. Cost to landowners and communities along the pipeline route, and the effects on cultural attachment, the traditions, attitudes, and practices that tie a person to the land, place, and kinship patterns, and reduction in property values. Climate change costs and health effects from leaking infrastructure and compressor stations emissions. Costs associated with induced gas drilling impacts other than greenhouse gas emissions, including the adverse effect on water quality, tourism losses, clogged roads, the effect of infrastructure on the scenic value of rural areas. And to the point of greenhouse gas emissions, I just wanted to remind the commission that it is established that methane is up to 80 times as potent a greenhouse gas warming agent as CO2. Number four, ACP ignores the economic and environmental benefits of clean energy development that the ACP would displace, including increased implementation of energy efficiency and renewable energy, which would bring thousands of new jobs while protecting the environment and public health, and increased property values and property taxes. And FERC must consider alternatives to the ACP, such as colocating the corridor with existing rents of way and improving existing pipelines. In short, ACP severely affects our water resources, fragments our national forests, threatens endangered-- threatens endangered species, disrupts cultural attachments and communities, impacts historic resources, violates property rights, inflicts economic damage on communities, and continues to block the development of renewable energy sources. On November 3rd, 2015, the first of two researchers from Princeton University came to West Virginia to do a study on methane emissions from old gas infrastructure in the state. They visited Dodridge, Harrison, Lewis, Gilmar, and Upsher Counties. While in Upsher, they discovered several incidents of leaking gas infrastructure, including wells and pipelines both active and plugged. Their preliminary findings included some disturbing readings. Keeping in mind, the background methane readings are typically 2 parts per million, consider the following. At Coon Club Road Site, 20 yards downhill from steel pipe couplings, there was a reading of 30 parts per million and a strong odor. That's when we first accessed the site as we drove onto that road. At Coon Club Road Site Number One, at steel pipe couplings in the roadway, which are exposed, there was 120 parts per million and minimal odor. At Coon Club Road Site Number Two, at an aluminum coupling on a steel pipe in the roadway exposed, was a reading of 250 parts per million, which was bubbling in the water puddle. At Coon Club Road Site Three, adjacent to a private drive, at a wellhead on the right of way, 16% of the, okay?
Lower explosive limit.
Lower explosive limit, a very strong odor, and the device warning at five feet. At Cow Run Road, at an abandoned well, audible hissing, gauge showed 150 parts per million at the wellhead, it's 67%.
It's 150 PSI.
It's 150 PSI, I'm sorry, at the wellhead, 67% of the lower explosive limit. No identifying markings of ownership on that well. Very strong odor for 30 yards away, and the device warning was at 10 yards. At Gaines Road, wells that appear to be plugged have concealed connections underground and are still producing and leaking at 20 parts per million. On November 6th, 2015, we returned to some of these same sites with another team from Princeton and more sophisticated equipment, designed to identify the compounds and volume over a period of time, isolated from wind currents. This data will take time to process and analyze. It will then be merged with wind current data to show dispersion. These results will not be available to us for a couple of months. At Adrian School Road, adjacent to Adrian School, they found a well leaking at 120 parts per million on that day. There is a strong odor there and two households within 500 feet. One of them is actually closer than that. The study director, Stuart Riddick, is going to send Mountain Lake Preservation Alliance a VOC meter similar to the one that they used for the preliminary measurements so that we can continue to collect data throughout the county. The more data we require, the more accurate the study will be. The data from these locations will then be shared with Upsher County Pipe Association, Upsher Ovina, and Lewis Upsher LVPCE. We believe that these readings, the only preliminary, constitute a substantial health and safety hazard for residents in the affected counties. Considering that the state and counties are considering increasing the gas infrastructure by bringing online several large-capacity gas pipelines and associated infrastructure, as well as thousands of new horizontal wells, both planned and permitted, we believe this is an unacceptable risk. Did you have any comments, Ken?
No, I don't. April, have you let the gas company down by the, so they can take care of them?
It's unclear which companies, in some cases, since the wells are not marked as ownership, and different companies handle different wells, so we have not researched that and been able to contact the companies yet.
Okay. Terry, we're going to turn the information over to these three agencies to let them deal with the gas companies directly and give them the GPS coordinates, but we don't want to put the GPS coordinates in the public directory.
Well, I'm sure there is thousands of wells in Upsher County that has leaks in the gas line, because my father and uncle was in the drilling business, and we laid several miles of steel pipeline. With that being said, there will be leaks developed that the companies will be unaware of, because we have patched in with collars and we place pipe only when we get notified. A lot of these big manufacturers, you want to make, they own the wells, and they get a meter reading. But as far as having somebody walk the pipelines for miles, they do not do. If some, if you find a leak, you're able to contact them. Of course, Mike Walsh, I know a lot of them, I have contacted him, because he has walked some wells that my dad had owned. They, you will send a man out and do it. But I don't know any other way, you know what I mean, to be able to get the gas, which is needed, you know what I mean?
Well, we're not clear that it's needed at this point. First of all, that most of the areas that the pipeline, the large pipeline would run through, already receive gas, not all of them, but a lot of them do. And there is another set of expensive infrastructure that would be required to deliver the gas from the larger pipeline at the higher pressure down to a pressure that could be brought into a home. So that's a whole other question.
I'm sure they're not going to attach a 42-inch pipeline to run gas to dwell.
Right, but the infrastructure is...
And I'm sure that's not going to happen.
Right, and these infrastructures are very expensive. But what we're, our point is that when the infrastructure is outdated and malfunctioning, one, we believe that these issues need to be addressed as a matter of public safety, and two, that in the future, we could be looking at the same kind of scenario where things are abandoned and left uncorrected and then we put our communities at risk.
When these tests were taken, how far were they from the wellhead or the pipe? Were they, were they right on the surface of the pipe, the surface of the wellhead, or 20 feet back?
No, they'd be directly adjacent. It's pretty much a pinpoint meter, so I can identify whether it's coming from a valve or a leak underground that's right at the junction of the ground and the pipe. In general, you can pinpoint within a couple of...
So nationally, you'd get a higher reading that close to the pipe, 30 feet back, you may not get that type of reading.
And in the one case where we were downhill 20 yards from the site, we were getting 30 parts per million, which is 15 times normal, and reading a gas that's heavier than air because if it were just pure methane, it would have been moving away from us instead of some of it coming down towards us. So that's a concern, because, I mean, that hazard right there, a four-wheeler going down the road can ignite it.
And this is exposed, so that trucks and cars are going over these pipes that are leaking all the time. And one thing we found was that there was an aluminum coupling on a steel pipe, which is a good way to start corrosion and...
They usually use aluminum couplings when they know they've got a leak. We get around the leak, tighten them up, takes care of it until they get back to fix it.
Right.
With that being said, sometimes there ain't no hurry to get back to fix it.
Yeah, and that's where the leak was, right by, right on the coupling, at the end of it.
Yep.
So, any other questions?
You performed a study in conjunction with the Princeton University representatives?
We facilitated them coming to get the readings. We took them to sites that we knew of that had gas odor and possible leakage, and that's how they found the readings. And they were doing this, they are doing this study in Pennsylvania as well, and are they in Ohio as well?
Pennsylvania and New Jersey.
And New Jersey, so there is a multi-state study. They're trying to figure out the level of fugitive emissions from abandoned and plugged wells and old gas infrastructure. And as we know, there's a lot of pipelines that were laid many years ago that were intended to be buried but never did get buried. So as they are exposed and visible, they present a hazard in a variety of ways and for a variety of reasons. Exposure to weather, people, cars, accidents can happen.
So you're leaking concerns about the existing pipelines, not the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, or you are...
Oh, well, that's a good question. I do have leaking concerns about the new pipelines, not just the Atlantic Coast, but all of the proposed ones, because there is seismic activity in West Virginia, and when you have a pipeline that's made in sections and welded in sections and buried, and then the earth moves, you can have problems with that. And also, when they bend these pipes to go over the ridges, and sometimes they'll bend them in a 90-degree angle and then go up the ridge, which is the case in Dodridge County on the Stonewall Line. So as they bend those pipes, they create a weakness in the outside, which could later lead to a problem. And in fact, there was some kind of a blowout on that line, which they had to repair a couple of weeks ago, the Stonewall Line. The Stonewall Line has had all kinds of problems. We ran into one of the supervisors on one of the sites at Stonewall, who said that they were having trouble with slippage and other kinds of issues that they didn't really know how to deal with, because they hadn't laid pipeline on this type of terrain before. So it's kind of a new project for them. They really don't have experience doing this, and they are kind of concerned, and so are we.
Commissioner Brady, you mentioned that with the smaller pipelines, they don't have an individual that would walk the line and let somebody would report the leaking problem.
That is correct. Most generally, when we lay pipelines, it's usually 2-inch steel pipe. A lot of times, we lay it on top of the ground. Sometimes, when you go through people, probably they want it buried, which we do. Now, I think the new technique is plastic, which is both steel. With that being said, when you have that many small 2-inch lines running everywhere to the state of West Virginia, you have a lot of people who are the owner of gas companies that lives out of the state but has people here. I've usually found out that when you are doing major, bigger lines, that's transporting major gas, that people have a little bit more interest in seeing that everything is done right. Because when you have a gas line anywhere 30 inches to 42, transport gas, I mean, they have test places, you know what I mean, to make sure it is functioning right. Because like you say, you can have an accident anywhere.
Yeah. One of our concerns is that the shut-off valves would be run from Clarksburg, so if there was a malfunction, we're not sure how long it would take them to get here, but they would have to let the gas burn out anyway. And there's a 1.3-mile evacuation radius. So since the Atlantic Coast Pipeline is less than half a mile away from our high school, we're concerned about that location as well.
That I know was addressed in our last presentation when Dominion was here too, I believe, but Robert Ornort with Dominion is here today. Would you like to update us on the enhanced security of a pipeline of that size, of Atlantic Coast Pipeline?
Yeah, first of all, I want to make a statement about the opening remarks that our speaker said, and she said that the pipe, the gas in this line will be used for export, and it is totally untrue. We have customers in North Carolina and Virginia who will be using this gas for generating electricity, heating homes, and for industrial use, and none of the gas will be exported outside of this country.
Can I ask you a question related to that?
Sure.
How many customers?
How many customers?
Yeah.
How many customers?
Are those large, is that a company, or is that individuals, households?
Atlantic Gas Light will be using it to, for their customers. Now, that's not a, I don't know, I mean, once we deliver the gas, it's their gas to use. Duke will be primarily generating electricity because of the shutdown of the coal plants. Dominion will be using the gas for generating electricity. Atlantic Gas Light, which owns Virginia Gas, is in the tidewater area of Virginia. On a cold day in January, we have to produce operational flow orders, which means it's we're restricted in terms of the gas that we can get to that area. This, the gas will, that they will be using, the capacity they will be using will avoid operational flow orders that they get. So we have to basically tell them that we don't have enough gas for their industrial users, so that their residential users have gas to heat their homes. So these are the kinds of things that this, the gas from this project will be used for.
And they're not going to the coast for export, from Tennessee?
No, no.
Not at all?
No. You need a permit to export natural. You actually need two permits. You need one from the Department of Energy and one from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, are not in the queue for that tidewater area. You don't need export facility on East Coast, it's Cove Point, that has been permitted, and this project doesn't go in that direction.
We do know that Mountain Valley Pipeline Corporation said that they were not going to be exporting it in early stages.
And we repeatedly...
But then they changed their tune and said that they were. So we know that this could be a possibility for the future, and considering gas prices on the world market, it would make sense, it wouldn't make sense to keep the gas here when you can sell it overseas and get the best price, that's how the market works. But anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's all right, that's all right. Safety, I have, I, we're going to have automatic shut-off valves. Shut-off valves will be operated by our Park Comfort Gas Control as we operate them right now across our six states that we operate in. If they detect a leak on their system, they have a lot of different options. They can shut off the system, shut down compressor stations, shut off gate valve settings automatically, and this pipeline will be designed specifically to do that remotely. So if it senses a pressure differential on the system, those valves will automatically be closed. So they, they can automatically be closed, they sense an issue, or we can close them from our gas control area in Clarksburg. I have spoken to the superintendent of schools here, alleviated his fears and concerns for the pipe that are being closed in high schools, so we had had a lengthy discussion about that. We operate any number of pipelines in West Virginia located adjacent to high schools. I'll give you two examples. Ritchie County High School has a pipeline adjacent to it. What happens when you get close to a highly inhabited area, the classification of the pipeline changes. So the wall thicknesses increase, our inspections, internal and external increase, and we're required to do that by FINSA. Also, we walk every mile of our pipe. Our interstate system is walked annually. That's inspected, it's inspected from the air, and it's smart-pigged on a seven-year basis. You can't smart-pig them too much. Smart pigs identify issues, cathodic issues, wall thickness issues, weld integrity issues on our pipes, and we repair those immediately once we find them.
Can you explain what a smart pig is for those that are not aware?
Yes, a smart pig is a mechanical device that has thousands of sensors on it. It is inserted inside the pipe, and it's pushed by natural gas, and it inspects pipe as it rolls down the path. And we have, we will have a series of devices where we can load and unload the pig along the pipeline. It gathers so much data that it can't run the whole length of the pipeline all at one time. So we have to be able to unload it, recalculate it, take the data that is obtained as it's traveled down the pipe, put in a new chip, send it on its way. And it will identify, like a dent, within two inches. If somebody happened to dig into the ground and dented the pipe, it'll tell us within two inches along that pipeline route where that dent is. So it's, they're very accurate and very sophisticated machinery. We cannot have 90-degree bends in our pipeline because of smart pigs. And I doubt that Stonewall Line has 90-degree pipelines, because they're going to want a smart pig there as well.
Well, I visited the site, and the pipeline goes this way, and then there, the hill that it goes up is at about 90 degrees, so there must be a way for them to have done that.
But the radius is probably not 90, because that would be impossible for a smart pig to get in.
You're right, it's not 90 exactly.
They calculate, they calculate the radius so that it can be pegable.
But it's curved, my question was.
Yeah, yeah, and they bend, they flex, they can go transverse all different directions, but they're restricted in terms of the turn radius that they have.
I have just a few questions for you, would it be a personal? One is, you said that we have the shut-offs, you know, the automatic shut-offs that are operated in Clarksburg. What if there was a malfunction? Can you estimate how long it would take personnel to get to the site to deal with that?
Just depends on where the malfunction was, where our nearest facility is to operate that.
So if something happened...
It could be a variable, it could be, could be 10 minutes, it could be half an hour, depending on the remote location of the facility as well.
Or maybe even longer.
Mm-hmm.
Let me see, I'm trying to hold my questions. When you said you talked to the principal of the high school and alleviated his concerns about the proximity of the high school, how did you do that?
Pardon me?
That may be a question for a later time. I'll ask you that personally later. You were talking about the thickness of the pipe. What is the class of the pipe that runs less than half a mile from the high school?
We're, right now, we are doing all the classifications of the pipe. I imagine it's going to be a Class 1 pipe.
Class 1?
Yes.
And what is the thickest?
Overall, the thickness of the pipe will be about a half an inch. If we change the classification, it'll get thicker. No, Class 4, I'm sorry, Class 1 is minimal, Class 4 is maximum.
So you're talking about putting Class 4 there?
I don't know that for a fact, April. I'd have to look at the designs and talk to the engineer.
The last time I talked to the engineer, she said it was going to be Class 2.
Class 2, okay.
And Class 4 is the thickest, right?
Right.
Okay, just want to clarify that.
Right.
And are the welding sites on the Atlantic Coast Pipeline, will they be x-rayed?
Yeah, 100% of the wells on the pipeline will be x-rayed.
And then how often after the pipe is laid, will that happen?
Well, we don't, once it's x-rayed and it passes the x-ray, you don't have to x-ray it again, that's when the smart pig comes in, and the smart pig will take readings that passes by the wells to make sure that they are, that the integrity of the well is good.
And that happens how often?
Every seven years.
Seven years, okay. Thank you.
I have some material here I'll give the county commissioners, and it's all the various economic impact studies that we have done, and some other information that we've accumulated as we've done our projects, in case you're interested. A lot of reading, and at any time after the, if you have a question, I'll be glad to come in and address your concerns.
Okay.
April, do you have anything else?
Not for today, thank you.
I don't know if you have any questions. We're going to continue, as soon as we get this equipment, we'll continue to look for hotspots out there so that we can get the word to the appropriate pipeline companies.
And we're going to keep you updated.
And there is a lot of, you will find, certainly.
Yeah.
The new lines have been laid. I know when I used to lay pipeline, you're talking 40 years ago, 50 years ago, when I used to tong 2-inch pipe together for my dad and uncle who was in the drilling business over in Dodridge, Auburn. We drove a lot of shallow wells over there, and there was a lot of leaks, and a lot of the people who own the gas lines, you know what I mean, does not know about the leak. If it's small, they don't pick it up, but I think when you're dealing with a bigger pipeline, a 42-inch or a 36, if there's a leak, somebody knows about it, and somebody tries to address that immediately, because they do not want anything to happen. But with that being said, you can't predict what may happen.
Right, and with all of these minor leaks out there right now, the accumulative health effect is a concern, and that's the big portion of the Princeton studies, looking at the health effect. I'm interested, obviously, in the safety effect of it, and that was the big surprise in Upsher County, was the number of leaks in the existing infrastructure, for some reason, seems to be pocketed in Upsher County.
You will find that everywhere.
I do have one last comment. One of my points in the presentation, which you have a copy of, is that the studies commissioned by Dominion are, well, they're Dominion studies, so our point was that we need our own study done, we need an independent study done by a third party that doesn't have a financial interest in making the pipeline look good, or better than it really is for the culture and the environment. And we believe that the development of this pipeline and others like it will necessarily put back the development of other technologies that are struggling to come to before and really are coming pretty quickly despite the competition, but that we need to pave the way for cleaner energy and cleaner jobs and safer communities.
I want to make one more statement, and I think that it's an important one, and just try to address Mr. Campbell's concern for the leaking facilities. Last year, during the legislature, we passed Senate Bill 390. Senate Bill 390 specifically was passed to address leaking facilities that are operated by utilities. It gives us, it'll allow Dominion Hope, Mountain Air Gas, Equitable Gas, People's Gas to become more aggressive in identifying and replacing pipe that is leaking. So we, as an industry, understand the need to do that, and as a result of that understanding, we aggressively pursue legislation that'll allow us some rate relief to fix those leaking pipes that exist out there.
Rate relief, does that mean an increase in rates?
Could be.
Consumers?
Mm-hmm. Now, if the government would subsidize things like these, for renewable energy, I'm sure they wouldn't have to raise any rates.
I'm sorry, what are you saying?
I said if the government would subsidize the gas companies like they do renewable energies, they probably wouldn't have to raise any rates, probably could lower some rates.
Actually, the subsidies are much greater for fossil fuels than they are for renewables. $520 million to fossil fuels versus $120 million to renewables and subsidies is the figure that I remember. You can look that up.
Is there?
Yes.
Does anybody else have anything to commission and reference to that? If not, I'd like to thank you, April.
Thank you.
For your concern. I would like to thank Dominion, you know what I mean, for bringing their point to the commission. And I think when I listen to you or Dominion, I see that everybody is trying, in my opinion, to do the best they can. You want to see everything safer and better. Dominion wants to make everything, you know what I mean, to work and use every safety feature they can, you know what I mean, to ensure the safety of all the people where the pipeline goes to. With that being said, you know what I mean, I think you may quote that in your comments and bring it to the commission.
Thank you.